We're calling this meeting to order. Two is our attendance, roll call, Patty?
Trustee Gaines?
Present.
Trustee Reeves? Trustee Buffalo? Trustee Adams? Trustee Harvey?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Three is public comments. Close session, 3.1. Oh, okay. Pursuant to Board Policy Number 2350, public comment may be limited to three minutes per person. All speakers who would like to comment regarding the matter on the agenda must submit a public comment card to the Board President or the Recording Secretary before the point in the meeting at which the agenda item is called. Public comment cards are available at the information table in the middle of the theater from the Recording Secretary or online.
Before we begin, I have two comment cards saying that something they, one from Hal and one from May, saying that you're reading a statement by Vijay. Are these two separate statements? Okay, thank you so much for the clarification.
Thank you. So this is Vijay Jennings, read by Hal Huntsman.
It could take extra time now. I'm gonna start reading. All right. My name is Vijay Jennings and I have taught here for 18 years. For the past four years, Professor Ryan Rivas has heard the challenge to be better from two different AVC presidents. He taught during a global pandemic, a racial reckoning in our country, all while managing his private life in a crumbling public. Still, he demonstrated the kind of bravery many of us are talked out of. The common refrain is, just wait until you have tenure. This is about playing it safe, being effective, but don't go above and beyond. You might just get caught doing something good in a bad way. But Ryan Rivas decides to teach in the Lancaster prison anyway. He joined the Puente learning community to offer courses in community education studies. I am sure the line to volunteer for those moments is not that long, and I am sure the new hiring search this college will enact will quickly get us another Ryan Rivas. But this Ryan Rivas navigated personal traumas, pushed himself to academic conferences and trainings at the suggestion of his tenure review team, only to find himself seen as unprofessional, quote unquote, or not knowing how to quote code switch enough. Unfortunately for Ryan, all those trainings. You know, I've been mistaken for a lot of people, but I'll take Jason every day. Okay. Unfortunately for Ryan, all those trainings he was sent to urge Puente and Mojo faculty to be both professional and their most authentic selves, to bring culturally relevant content and approaches to the classroom. So Ryan Rivas comes home to us and does all this, and we don't develop him, deepen his practice, diversify our own thinking or on teaching. We deny him tenure. So we are failing Ryan as an institution, and I argue his commitment has failed him year, his committee has failed him year after year. Why not invest and pour into a young man who connects with his students? Why wouldn't they get behind someone who is equity minded, but many students still think is just too hard? I'm not saying everyone should get tenure or even keep it. 18 years have afforded me some wild stories on how you go about absolutely blowing up one of the best jobs you can have. I am saying this is incredibly ironic. The Academic Senate is currently debating a glossary of DEIA terms, and many faculty fear this is one step, this one step may lead to a decline in rigor and a devaluing of merit. One tenured faculty member even wrote an article. They are concerned this will all lead to intense evaluations and harsher scrutiny for this, who don't quote get it. This whole diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility song everyone is singing these days. I assure you all here, I assure you all here, that this situation with Professor Ryan Rivas has always been and probably will continue to be what likely happens to faculty who openly embrace DEIA principles. The world has surely changed. Taylor Swift is in love again, but some faculty will not have the same academic freedom or continue to make a living for their family because they don't quote fit the definition of a college professor that was made 100 years ago. I call for an appeal to this decision not to grant Professor Ryan Rivas tenure.
Thank you, Mr. Huntsman. Next, we have Ryan Rivas.
Good evening, board members. Today, from what I read on the agenda, it's supposed to be a celebratory meeting with various accomplishments from my colleagues and from students being recognized. One of those accomplishments is going to be the attainment of tenure for some of my colleagues, folks that I've seen on that list that I'm really excited about. But unfortunately, this is also a bittersweet moment for me because my name has been omitted from this list of faculty receiving tenure. Now, in this appeal today, I ask for a resolution to my tenure situation. Situation that has been incredibly difficult and unjust, an evaluation that despite my use of culturally relevant practices through professional developments that I've been to, including professional developments through the Puente program, has been, these practices have been devalued and have led to, again, an unjust decision for me not to receive tenure. In addition, this decision was also influenced by someone that I know to have been recently terminated, and so marring, of course, a flawed process that I have endured. In the four months since my appeal, I have received nothing but, I have endured nothing but a waiting game, as opposed to any discussion or communication. The last time I communicated with anybody was on February 6th, and that communication assured me that I would receive a response before this board meeting. Unfortunately, all I was met with was with silence, and I had to find out that I was omitted by reading the agenda. Now, despite being in this state of ambiguity, I assure you that my commitment to this institution has been clear, that I am a Hispanic instructor that is ready to serve a Hispanic-serving institution. One where, as my part of my commitment, I commit to empowering students through their voice, through their experience in advocating for themselves, despite what the world might tell them, similar to my situation. I commit myself to programs like Puente, to initiatives through my communications department, through seeing out the potential in an esports, a competitive esports program, and continuing to be an advisor and committing to programs outside of the classroom. Now, I can't do that without a favorable decision, a decision that will allow me to continue to be committed to this college and to this community. And so, once again, I appeal to you to help me attain a resolution that will allow me to do this, to also, that will allow you to honor your commitment to diversity based on Board Policy 7100, that recognizes the need for role models such as myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Carlos. Pinho.
Yes, good evening. My name is Carlos Pinho. I teach administration of justice. I also serve as the VP of Grievances for the Union. However, I was approached by Ryan Rivas, and he gave me a challenge. He says, you know, Carlos, I have some issues that have been presented to me in my tenure process, and I really want to know, do I belong here? I said, okay, fair enough. So he gave me a challenge. He says, will you please review my overall tenure process? And tell me what you think. If you don't think I should be here, if you don't think I'm a good instructor or valued here, then just please tell me. So I said, fair enough, I'll take up your challenge. So I then proceeded to go through and print out every evaluation that Ryan had, his class climate, his peer review studies. And then systematically, I went through to look at student comments, some discrepancies and facts in the tenure reports. And, you know, I teach a report writing to my students, and I see how important it is to document things accurately and to follow that chain of information through the entire process. I brought up some of my concerns to the VPAA, and she says, yes, there are potential issues in the tenure process that need to be corrected. There was some authoritative processes, such as the person that was in charge of the entire tenure process for the entire college, was also the tenure committee person that was in charge of Ryan's process. So if he was to appeal to a person in their position of power, that would also be one and the same person. So that tenure review committee person was also his tenure chair committee person. So they wore two authoritative hats. So he had no chance to appeal any of the errors or miscommunication within that tenure process. So again, as I systematically went through, I made notes. I gave the VPAA a full four-inch ring binder of what I believed were the facts. And so, from our last conversation, she was taking those things into consideration. The other party, which was a dean that was involved in the tenure process, unfortunately, was dismissed from her service, which was one of the third wheels in the three-person tenure process. And then again, the VPAA assumed the deanship of that department. So in fact, now, you know, Ryan had no dean, which is now the VPAA, which is the correct assignment. However, the imbalance of the checks and balances kind of continued. Had there been another party that he could refer to since that time, Ryan has informed me he's never had a one-on-one outside the room from his tenure committee chair, which, again, he could not speak freely and openly. And I hope tonight, by hearing our voices and the voices of his coworkers and other students, that would make a difference. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Greg Langer.
Good evening. Dear Executive and Elected Leaders of Antelope Valley College, Ryan Rivas is among the most effective, intuitive, and I'll add, after this remark, inspiring and innovative instructors I've had the privilege to work with and learn from here or on any campus. I hope you will strongly and positively consider, in serving the needs of our students, the chorus of community voices asking Ryan Rivas granted tenure. Notably, my own teaching practices expressly reflect and have been reinforced and improved by those Professor Rivas implements in his classes through keen insight into the distinct and diverse needs of our students. Whenever I encounter former students of my colleague, Ryan Rivas, including those enrolled in our Rising Scholars Prison Program, I am always both impressed and motivated by the admiration they show, the quality of his teaching, and for the level of commitment reflected in his overall support of the Antelope Valley College community. As a former Assistant Basic Course Director, once responsible for scheduling and supervising public speaking instruction while overseeing satisfaction of accreditation and general education standards at a large local CSU, as a doctoral scholar in our field with published peer review research on communication studies, pedagogy, and instructional philosophy, as well as significant experience serving committees responsible for curriculum development, textbook selection, and instructional evaluation, I can and feel compelled to reaffirm further that Ryan Rivas, inclusive of his teaching style and curricular standards, is in fact, one of the most uniquely qualified and hardworking educators I have ever worked with in higher education. And he is one of the best-prepared people to help our campus continue to become the welcoming space our students and community need us to be. Thank you for your consideration and for your commitment to our students.
Thank you. Next, we have Alexandria Martinez.
Good evening. I am a biology major in my fifth semester here at ABC and have the pleasure of taking Rivas during my second semester as a requirement of my program Puente. Although I found Rivas a bit difficult at times as an instructor, I can confidently say that he has made my education better. When it comes to public speaking, I often struggle because I suffer with anxiety. But thanks to Rivas's communications class, I was able to work through many of my fears because of techniques taught in his class, as well as speeches that were required. Aside from my experience with him as a student, I want to point out how important it is to have Latina professors. ABC is an HSI that needs professors who can bring culturally relevant curriculum like Rivas. As I have said before, I am in my fifth semester and have only taken 16 classes. Of those 16 classes, only five were instructed by Latinos. The only reason I took their classes was because my counselor, Mesa Nicolas, a co-coordinator of Puente, had encouraged me to continue taking classes with Latina professors outside of the program. While I respect and look up to all my current and past professors, having instructors of the same cultural background brings me a feeling of comfort and relatability, whether it be in the way they talk, in their mannerisms, or in their curriculum. Rivas did an amazing job in showcasing this by just even talking Spanglish to his students and making it feel like I have a place in his class here at this campus just by speaking of his college journey as a Latino. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have May Sanicolas.
Good afternoon. And I have three others, I'm reading for others. Good afternoon, members of the board. I'm speaking today on behalf of my colleague, Ryan Rivas, whose name has noticeably been omitted from the list of faculty being granted tenure tonight. I can speak about the preparation and professional development Rivas has been involved with during the last two years. I met Ryan through Puente when he volunteered as a mentor to our first cohort. After deliberating with the past co-coordinators, we decided to ask Ryan to be part of the team and to teach a Puente-FI comm 101. Since then, I've had the privilege of attending several Puente conferences with Ryan, who also contributes regularly to monthly Puente planning meetings. He and I also presented an FPD on disrupting pedagogical norms based on professional development we were inspired by. From my understanding, his omission from the list of to-be newly-tenured faculty is because he was putting our work into practice. This college, for the last couple of years, has verbally committed to providing equitable practices and culturally relevant and responsive teaching. We have a Latiné profe doing this hard work filled with cariño, and he's been criticized and told not to do it. Professor Rivas is a committed professor who brings culture and a decolonized approach to teaching. In the two years that I've worked with Rivas, I know that he takes his role very seriously, cares deeply about students and their success, and most of all, he is often thinking of ways he can improve as an instructor and how we can best serve our students. I can guarantee you that, as faculty of color, being your genuine and authentic self in the classroom is much more challenging than being a run-of-the-mill instructor, checking all the expected boxes, and unfolding the norms of white supremacy. Some members of the board and in the audience might take offense to a race or ethnic card. To be fair, ABC is an HSI receiving HSI funds. Many authorities of equitable practices and spaces will say that it's meaningful that students have instructors that look like them and can relate to their experiences. It's beyond upsetting that roughly 64% of our students identify as Hispanic-Latiné, and only 20% of our full-time faculty represent those students. That's 37 of 184. It has to be said, it has been said by an administrator that the tenure review process is flawed, but also that we need to trust it. Trust a flawed process at the expense of a capable colleague's career and livelihood. We see those tenure review committee members who saw anti-racist and decolonized principles in practice without themselves fully knowing, understanding, relating, or being trained themselves. They were charged with evaluating a faculty member who is trained and who is currently an active member of an affinity group that he was trained for, and that affinity group represents and could be a pedagogical model to teach the 64% of our Hispanic-identified students. The message I'm receiving from this process and situation is that those of us who are devoting our careers to affinity groups and anti-racist practices are not safe. The message I'm receiving is that the college hopes and works for equitable solutions only at surface level. If you really genuinely want this work to be done, you all need to create a brave space for us and trust the process of your courageous practitioners.
Thank you. I know you are also reading for Genesis.
Yes. Genesis is a current Puenteista. During my ABC semester, taking Ryan Rivas as my professor for comm has helped me so much in my public speaking. For one of my assignments, I was stuck. I then decided to go to Ryan Rivas's office hours to get help. He then broke down his assignment and took me, took time, even going over his office hours just to help me with his assignment. As a Hispanic professor, I can relate to some of his experiences. Ryan Rivas is the only Hispanic professor willing to break down his assignment as he takes time and doesn't get frustrated with me being slow. Also, being in his class, I felt more welcomed. I don't feel stupid like how I feel with my other classes. Instead, I feel motivated. Ryan Rivas is also a chill person. He might be, he might be strict with his material, even though all other professors are strict as well. He is still willing to take time out of his day to help students.
Thank you. And I believe next is Kimberly Castillo.
Good evening, board members. My name is Kimberly, and I am one of the co-coordinators and counselor for the Puente program. I'm writing to express my strong support for Professor Ryan Rivas, though I haven't, Ryan Rivas. Though I haven't known Ryan for long, in the time I have, I can see that he genuinely cares about the students he serves. He consistently demonstrates his authenticity, which is so appreciated, especially as a professor in the Puente program. Students value this. He also takes the time to engage in outside Puente activities, such as attending conferences and other Puente-related events and meetings. His proactive involvement showcases his dedication to staying updated on best practices and ensuring that he provides the highest quality support to our students. I believe Ryan deserves the opportunity to continue inspiring our students at ABC.
Thank you for that. And I believe our last one is Tiffany.
Before we move forward, I just want to make the board aware we've used 20 minutes of the 30-minute allotted time. I understand that.
The Nicolas.
The Nicolas. Is, is reading for other people, which is not traditional. Want to make sure that there aren't other people, after this, after she reads for this one, that there aren't others who may or may not get to speak because we're running up on the time.
And this is the last comment card. So.
There's also more support, but because we can't do anonymous comments, there are less to read for fear of retaliation. Last semester, while assisting a new ABC student with her education plan, an interesting conversation unfolded. As they discussed the necessity of taking comm 101, public speaking, her demeanor immediately frightened. Inquisitively, she inquired, does Mr. Rivas still teach that class? Confirming his continued presence among the comm faculty, she enthusiastically began to recount the profound impact Mr. Rivas had on her during her high school years. With heartfelt sincerity, she shared the challenges she faced during her teenage years, painting a vivid picture of Mr. Rivas's classroom as a sanctuary amidst turmoil. She spoke of the invaluable guidance he offered, transforming her educational journey during her most trying moments. Witnessing her excitement at the mere prospect of having him as her college instructor was inspiring. Retaining instructors of Mr. Rivas's caliber should be a priority for our institution. The ability to foster an environment where students feel valued, supported, and inspired is a testament to his dedication and passion for teaching. Investing in the tenure of educators like Mr. Rivas not only honors their contributions, but also ensures the continuity of excellence in our academic community.
Thank you. We are now moving to four. We are adjourning. Yes, you may.
Thank you, President Harvey. There've been some strong statements made, fear of retaliation and things like that. I want to remind this room that the tenure process is a faculty-led process, and if faculty are experiencing pressures from other faculty, there are, or anyone, if anyone on campus is experiencing anything negative from anyone on campus, we have ways to deal with that. We have processes to deal with that. And so, I don't want it left hanging in the air that people can't do something out of fear. We don't want to be a college that operates out of fear. So I just wanted that clarification stated. Thank you for your patience.
I appreciate you clarifying that we are adjourned to closed session. I appreciate you clarifying that. We are adjourned to closed session.
Okay. We are reconvening to public session. Four point one, two, three, and four point four, there is no report. Four point five, a motion was made by Mr. Adams, second, by Mr. Buffalo, with a five zero vote. The board approved the president's goals for twenty-four, twenty-five, and they will be posted to the president's web page. Will do attend.
Student trustee Rivera.
Present.
Trustee Gaines.
Present.
Trustee Reeves.
Here.
Trustee Buffalo. Trustee Adams. Trustee Harvey.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Mr. Adams, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Certainly, all please rise, face the flag, place your hand over your heart and recite. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
We are at the approval of the meeting agenda, two point one.
So moved.
Student trustee Rivera.
I approve.
Trustee Gaines.
I approve.
Trustee Reeves.
Yes.
Trustee Buffalo. Trustee Adams. Trustee Harvey. Motion passed.
I've given a report of closed session, but I will repeat four point one through four, there is nothing to report. Four point five, five zero vote on approval of the president's goals. We're to ten, public comments, ten point. Pursuant to Board Policy Number Twenty-three fifty, public comment may be limited to three minutes per person. All speakers who would like to comment regarding the matter on the agenda must submit a public comment card to the board president or the recording secretary before the point in the meeting at which the agenda item is called. Public comment cards are available at the information table in the middle of the theater from the recording secretary or online. First, we have Kalen Vasquez.
So I'm reading Kalen Vasquez, who is a Puente students' commentator in regards to Ryan Rivas. Rivas helps with my education with his support and is eager to help students when in class and when I show up for office. He helps me come out of my shell as presenting is tough, but he makes it less stressful when he talks about public speaking anxiety and notices that my embarrassing reactions when I give my presentations are normal. This has helped me in my journey in Puente because I never had a relationship with my professors to trust the process of my work. He knows I'm not perfect and that's okay. Only a few professors I know identify as Hispanic professors. He makes us feel comfortable using Spanish in our presentations and in our everyday conversations. Not only that he understands struggles that not many white professors I do have understood in terms of undocumented parents, mental health not existing in Hispanic families, machismo fathers, and overall missing class because it's important to tend to our families because, God forbid, we forget about our families and health. Besides Rivas and Bianca, there are not many professors I've had that talk about culturally relevant curriculum. That's the point of Puente, especially in Rivas's class, there's family and community in that class which makes it feel comfortable. And with his curriculum, especially when I draft up my outline, when I give my speech, it makes me feel heard. Though he may be a critical professor on our coursework, this class has helped me enrich my experience by making me feel confident about attending, listening to his lectures, and feel confident in giving my presentations. Having a strict professor makes educated students, makes educated students, he makes me feel proud of myself when I work hard for my success. When I ask him about my homework, he doesn't scold me or make me feel stupid. He helps me by breaking it down. He even used my assignment to show to the class. At first, I was embarrassed. If I understood that he didn't show my work, I wouldn't have motivated and pushed these students to do their work too. It also broke down their concerns and helped me with my concerns for my own work. Not only was he helping the whole class, but me as well. Even my classmates share their opinions and it helped me a lot to me. This is my professor, Ryan Rivas. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Tino Garcia.
Hello, I'm back again. This is in regards to Ryan Rivas's tenure. Dear Board members, my name is Tino Garcia, and until this year, I had the privilege of teaching at ABC for over eight years. First as an adjunct and then as a tenure track and tenured English professor. I love ABC and want to see it continue to flourish. And that is why tonight I am voicing my robust support for Professor Ryan Rivas, a dedicated and dynamic faculty member in Communication Studies. Here's why Professor Rivas deserves tenure. Professor Rivas exemplifies steadfast commitment to his students and the academic community. His promise lies not only in his expertise, but also in his passion for fostering equity as a communications professor and a Puente practitioner. As a Puente co-coordinator and fellow instructor, I witnessed firsthand Professor Rivas's efforts within the Puente learning community and as a former Puente mentor. His dedication extends beyond the classroom, reaching students both within our institution and at the Lancaster prison. Professor Rivas embodies maturity, passion for serving students, reliability, and thoughtfulness. We both attended intensive Puente trainings and conferences where we were trained in dynamic, culturally responsive, and anti-racist teaching approaches. Professor Rivas thoughtfully integrates these strategies into his classes, creating a rich and inclusive learning environment that benefits all students and centers the experience of marginalized students. Moreover, student evaluations consistently highlight Professor Rivas's effectiveness as an educator. His classes are not only fruitful, but also refreshingly culturally responsive, resonating with Puente students in part because of how he relates to them through his Latino background and community cultural wealth. He uses similar strategies to those I used and was applauded for. So I wonder why he is being penalized for his equitable evidence-backed approaches. While I acknowledge that I haven't observed Professor Rivas's classes, I firmly believe that tenure decisions should consider the whole picture of what someone brings to campus. It would be short-sighted to overlook his immense contributions over the last three years. In closing, I urge the board to recognize Professor Ryan Rivas's edifying impact on ABC. Granting him tenure would not only honor his dedication, but also strengthen its commitment to excellence as a Hispanic-serving Granting him tenure would not only honor his dedication, but also strengthen its commitment to excellence as a Hispanic-serving institution. Thank you for your time and thoughtful consideration. Sincerely, Tino Garcia.
Thank you. Next, we have Emmy Dominguez.
This is also in regards to Ryan Rivas's tenure. Dear Board of Trustees, my name is Emmy Dominguez. I major in English and I am set to graduate from ABC this spring. I'm a student who is a part of the second cohort of ABC's Puente program, and I also work as a peer leader under the program to help guide the program's current cohort. I took Professor Rivas's class in the two twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three spring semester, and I would like to express both concern for his current standing at ABC and voice support for him. During the duration of his class, I was able to observe qualities within Professor Rivas's curriculum and coursework that were beneficial to my education and stay at ABC. As a Latina, I was able to connect with the class on a more personal level due to how Professor Rivas expressed and carried himself. He made the classroom more welcoming by mirroring an experience that I have every day outside of the classroom. He spoke to me and my fellow Puentistas in both English and Spanish. This was the integral part of my experience in his classroom as it allowed me to integrate into the coursework more easily. From there, it was more comfortable to digest the course material he presented. Aside from switching from English and Spanish with us, Professor Rivas spoke to us with familiarity and support as he knew firsthand what it was like to be Latina going through higher education. However, I will admit that the entirety of his coursework did not flow smoothly for me. By the end of the semester, I was dropped from Rivas's class. This drop was very tense as Professor Rivas showcased a side of him that I now know is what ABC expects him to show. Rivas had dropped his amiable personality and opted for a more strict and authoritative one with me, which I know is the opposite of what Puente faculty were trained to do. I do not bring up this instance out of malice as I acknowledge that my own actions are what caused me to be removed from the course, but rather a different perspective on the criticisms that Professor Rivas is receiving. I do not believe that expecting Professor Rivas to be more authoritative in his teachings would be productive when it comes to teaching Puente students, as rebellion against male authority has been common within Latina social and cultural frameworks. Rivas's amiable and familiar disposition from the beginning is what allowed students to engage more with, in his class, and gain more knowledge within his teachings. Despite my dismissal from his class, Professor Rivas still emphasized his care for me and wished the best for me, which in turn is why I write this letter of unconditional support for him. Furthermore, Professor Rivas's unstable standing at ABC raises concerns about diversity within the staff. As an HSI, ABC should consider the lack of Latina staff. Within my two years at ABC, out of sixteen professors, only five, including Professor Rivas, were Latina. I will not dismiss the teachings of the non-Latinas professors I've taken classes with at ABC, but I hope the social and cultural enrichment from the perspective of Latinas students of taking classes with Latina professors is not only understood, but also valued. Thank you for taking the time to read my letter. warmly, Emmy Dominguez.
Thank you. Alondra Barajas.
Hello, my name is Alondra Barajas. Professor Rivas has greatly impacted my academic journey. I often feel out of place on campus, but Professor Rivas has created an environment in his class where I can thrive and grow. He's not just focused on me passing his class, but teaching essential life skills that I will carry with me the rest of my life. It's really difficult for me to speak publicly because I've had anxiety most of my life. However, he's taught me skills so that I can actually look at people in the eyes and not always look down at my note cards and actually remember how to speak and get over my anxiety. I'm still working on it, obviously, as you could tell, but he's made it so that I don't feel so alone in it. And even when I didn't know how to help myself and I didn't know even the things that I was struggling with because I didn't grow up in an environment, being Latina, I didn't grow up in an environment where my parents really did this stuff. Everybody always worked. And Professor Rivas doesn't just care about me getting an education and passing a class. He cares about me actually learning things so that I can be a better person and I can be a better mentor even. Things that I've learned in his class, I've applied to my job and I'm better able to help my students and better able to work with them and understand them because I got to have a teacher that didn't just look at my grades or say, hey, you're struggling. Well, this was the deadline or this was the time you were supposed to submit this. He says, hey, what's going on and how can I best support you? And I think that's essential to have with our staff, not just that, but having a staff that comes from a similar background to me. It really helps me to not feel like I don't know what I'm doing because I look at someone who has come from where I come from and where he's at now, like, I'm so excited. Because before, I didn't think that was possible and having a professor like Professor Rivas made me realize that I can achieve anything as long as I set my mind to it. So thank you for having me today.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Cole Wood.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for letting me come speak tonight. Happy March. So I teach deaf studies and interpreting on our campus, and in that area, we talk a lot about issues of social justice equity. We talk about how there are intersections of deaf people who experience oppression and whatnot. And because of those discussions, a lot of students feel comfortable talking to me. Before I go further, I want to share one other thing. In a previous life, I used to sell cars. I also worked in the restaurant business. And one of the things I learned from that was when you do a wonderful job and just wow somebody, they will go and tell on average of three to four people what a great job you did. But when somebody has a bad experience with you and they're not happy, they go out of the way to tell eight to ten people about that experience. It's a lot harder to get people to come up with a happy comment, and I'm sure you all know that as a board, right? You get, most people come in to complain about something. What that means is when somebody has something good to say, that's when we really should listen. In my classes, I create a safe environment, I guess, because students will come and just share stuff with me. They'll share frustrations with classes they're having, what's going well, what's not, complaints as well. Three separate occasions, I've had students come and specifically say Ryan Rivas and what a difference he's made for them. I'm not asking for this information, they come up and bring it to me on their own. One of the comments, it actually stood out, and I'm glad I saved this. He said specifically, he makes us feel like our background, our language, our status, and the student said, as a Chicano student, for the first time, I feel like it's not a liability, but rather an asset. Another student commenting that, for the first time, I felt seen in the classroom, like I belonged there. I wasn't an intruder there, I belonged there. You know, we talk about closing gaps in equity and moving that needle, and that's not always an easy thing to do because that comes with a whole bunch of decisions that have to be made, policies and directions. And sometimes we don't even know that a policy might inadvertently have a bad effect or a good effect. This is one of those easy slam dunk moments where we can all go to bed knowing that we made the right choice and moved us in the right direction. This is one of them. Student success starts in the classroom. Student success starts when students feel heard, seen in their classroom, when they feel like they belong. That's what this professor does. It's not an easy task to do that, and obviously, this guy is doing it all day long. I'm here to support Ryan Rivas in this regard. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And next, we have Jason Bowen.
Good evening. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, presidents-elect, it's Patty Mcclair, good to see you, general counsel, Ms. Bridgette Cook. I've, you know, been listening to some audio books over the spring break, and, you know, I won't go into all the details, I only have three minutes. But, you know, there were stories about corporations and institutions that value profit over the human beings that comprise those corporations. In other words, the human beings are cogs in a wheel. And these stories were shared to contrast those where there are institutions where the leadership of those institutions view the human beings as their greatest asset. And I, you know, there's an example, one specific example where there was a company that lost a lucrative and extremely critical contract, and they had a choice to make so they could weather the storm easily enough over the next couple of years if they laid off their staff. However, they chose to not lay off the staff for the following reasons. The employees, some of them recently bought homes because they relocated. Some of the employees have families where the leadership actually met some of the family members. So we have leadership at institutions where they have to report to shareholders, but they're able to walk this fine line where, yes, there's goals to achieve, but the human beings are the most valuable asset that we have. I bring that up because I still continue to see an environment at ABC where this is a punitive environment and the human beings are not respected and valued as they should be. We still have a faculty member who was on administrative leave. Now, I'm aware of the reasons why this faculty member was placed on administrative leave at the beginning of fall last year. None of those reasons justify why they should still remain on administrative leave. There are several effects from being on administrative leave, paid administrative leave. If I were on administrative leave, I would have to suffer, one, I would wrestle with faith in the institution at which I work and love. I would wrestle with embarrassment, not just, you know, embarrassment, looking at myself in the mirror, what did I do wrong? But embarrassment with my family members, with my friends who are aware that I'm on administrative leave. So it takes its toll on the individual, even though it's technically non-disciplinary, that does not matter in terms of the psychological impact of such an action. It should always be an extreme last resort. There's the effect on their colleagues where they have to pick up the slack. So even now, we're still continuing to deal with these matters. So let's value, I would like to value, the institution to value human beings above all else. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ethan A.
Hello, hello. Dear Boards of Trustees, let me move this, sorry. Dear Boards of Trustees, today I represent not just myself, a united front of students from our advocacy group equating a widespread issues within ABC's halls. A culture of fear, retaliation, and discrimination, this environment intentionally discourages our voices and highlights systematic flaws needing your direct intervention. Well, you know, Ethan, I don't know why I'm here. You keep asking for a meeting, and now I'm here. I don't know why I'm here, but I'm here. So what do you have to say? End quote. These words from VP Paquet during a recent meeting convened to discuss my concerns and wrongful termination starkly illustrate the dismissiveness that students often encounter. Moreover, the evident confusion from both VP Reyes and VP Paquet about the existence of a student worker booklet, essential for understanding our rights, signals a deep-seated neglect and misinformation. Additionally, efforts to navigate AP's fifty-five thirty's grievance process were met with the resistance from VP Paquet, VP Helsper, and VP Patron Reyes, who is tasked with overseeing student grievances, with resistance and clear, and the clear bias from all administrators, not only science us, but contradicts the very principle ABC stands for, leaving many without a voice or means to seek justice. Addressing these systematic failures, we urgently request, one, transparent communication. Ensure the student worker booklet is readily accessible to all, clarifying our rights and responsibilities. Two, review and management practices, commitment to fair, transparent practices that prioritize accountability. Three, clear complaint process, establish an accessible, unbiased grievance process free from bureaucratic complications. Four, reinstatement and compensation. Fairly compensate and consider restating those unjustly affected. Yes, this includes the restatement of my job as a STEM tutor. I'm still without a student worker position since my wrongful termination. Fifth, my favorite, mandatory training. Implement mandatory training for administrators to foster empathy and effective communication. And lastly, six, addressing abusive behavior. Decisive action against any administrator engaging in harmful conduct securing a safe environment for all. This plea reflects the critical gap between ABC's stated values and our lived experiences. Bracing them on a quote, serve students, be kind, must move beyond words to action. To date, this administration has failed to address these issues. Therefore, this inaction overwhelmingly signals a need for administrative change. To President Zella and all administrators, ABC is meant to be a beacon of learning and growth, not a place marred by your instilled fear and intimidation. Those unable to embody ABC's ethos should seek their career advancement elsewhere. We urge the board to implement these changes, creating a supportive, respectful, and inclusive ABC. Our collective future hinges on the actions you take today. Thank you for your attention and commitment to addressing these urgent concerns. Our collective hope is for an ABC that fully represents and supports its student body. If not, thank you, and we represent the student advocacy group. Thank you.
Bridget Sedano.
The first time I spoke, I felt nervous due to the fact that the director was here. I knew that we were going to discuss about them in the room. I was aware that voicing my opinion makes me a target. Unfortunately, this fear of retaliation prevented many students from speaking out today, which is one of the reasons on why they are not here. After the board meeting, the tension in the room was high, murmurs, stares, harsh monitorization or monitoring, followed with intimidating stares from the director itself. Myself and other students noticed ourselves defending ourselves once more from from the word insubordination. It consistently and constantly is a battle to force us to hold our tongues and take deep breaths and walk away so certain so certain things won't escalate. I find myself in a no-win situation where one staff member approves what I do and the other one says that it's not enough. And you can only imagine whenever I make a mistake. I feel unwelcome and I question why I should endure in this environment. But I've always been a person to speak out, especially for my friends. I brought up a student needing accommodations to Chloe, one of our student specialists. And the same student asked me to join a conversation to remind Chloe of their accommodations that are needed for the study gym. However, Chloe responded with, well, there's not much we can do and you need to remember that this is also for all students. Of course, we walked out shocked, and I voiced that this was going to come to the board meeting so you guys could be aware of the situation. Surprisingly, there was a sudden change in attitude moments after my comment with Chloe saying, let's see what we can do. Fortunately and thankfully, they were allowed to participate. However, it arises a question, why does this change only approach only when we mention the board or HR? Serve students, be kind. Serve students, be kind. Yet, I always find myself in a position where I have to hold my tongue, serve students, be kind. Where monitoring is so high to the point that students can't even speak within themselves or are scared to speak out, serve students, be kind. Despite the faculty telling us to come to them whenever we're seeking help, I found myself where I used to come to certain staff members with my native tongue, feeling comfortable to talk about family or situation or how I want to grow, it just became a hello and goodbye when certain people are observing. I just want to thank everybody for listening, especially our teachers and staff, and once more giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Next, we have Dr. Aurora Bird.
Good evening, President Zella and members of the Board of Trustees. I know it's been some time since I've addressed you, maybe you missed me. I'm here tonight on my own behalf to discuss an issue with my pay that's come up since I returned for Fall 2023 from a maternity leave that occurred during Spring 2023. I regularly teach two I regularly teach two sections of Earth Science one oh one and I'm the only Earth Science one oh one instructor most terms. Earth Science one oh one is a lecture and lab combined course worth four units for students and six LHC, i.e. three for lecture and three for lab with the instructor with a class size maximum of twenty four for lecture and twenty four for lab, as shown in the last official course proposal from twenty nineteen. Ms. McClure can hand those out to you, please. For fall twenty twenty three, I had requested a change of my two sections to a blended modality where lecture would be asynchronous online and lab would continue to be face to face. I painstakingly updated the class for the new modality. After the start of the semester, I discovered that one of the sections of Earth Science one oh one lecture had been listed at zero LHC instead of three. Had I been given my load sheet prior to the start of the semester, I could have used my right of refusal to not accept this pay cut. Instead, the semester was already underway and I didn't want to leave my students with no instructor, which would likely cause the class to be canceled because again, I'm the only regular instructor for this course. In the ensuing back and forth with Academic Affairs, I was informed by Academic Affairs that the course maximum for lecture was forty eight and that because that portion of the course was asynchronous online, I could only get paid for one section of lecture instead of two. This represents a loss of pay to me of three LHC. This is despite the two sections having separate CRNs and being separate. Um, and again, this official course proposal. Academic Affairs has produced no official document showing a class size maximum greater than twenty four because there is no such document. Academic Affairs' choice to unilaterally combine these two sections of Earth Science one oh one represents multiple different violations of the collective bargaining agreement and APMP policy. The Federation has been trying valiantly in good faith to address this issue uh with with VP Bakit for months, but with no apparent success, and I think it's important to share it with the board because ABC is mistreating me. Issues like this are why the campus climate remains poor under President Zelat. Unsurprisingly, this issue has again reappeared on my spring twenty twenty four load sheet. Actually, it's worse because now I'm zeroed out on both sections of the lecture. Um, I'm not getting paid for either of them. It's week nine. I've asked four times for it to be fixed and I'm still being told it'll happen at some point in the future. This is wage theft. It's worth at least ten thousand dollars in associated benefits. Why does VP Bakit um refuse to pay me for my work? Why does President Zelat refuse to pay me for my work? Is this retaliation for my previous work as part of the Federation? Is it discrimination against me as a working parent? Frankly, it's both. That like most employees here at ABC, I love being here, but you know what? I have to pay for my life and support my family. I'm here to serve students and be kind, but I can't do that while I'm working for free. This is unacceptable. I need to be paid for my work. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. All right, we are to eleven, eleven point one, the CalHope Courage Award Recognition.
Good evening, Dr. Zella, Board of Trustees. Twenty twenty four has been wonderful to our student athletes, both January and February. In January, Kami Nelson received the CalHope Courage in Athletics Award and in February, um, I have to look at my note here real quick. I'm sorry. Caleb Caleb Gardner received the National Football Foundation Scholar-Athlete Award. Uh, I'm going to have Coach Jalek and Coach Lapointe come and and introduce to you Caleb Gardner.
Um, thank you, Perry Jalek, the head football coach, and I'm introduced to you. Caleb Gardner is a starting running back for us and um he's what you want in your student athletes. He had carried a three point six GPA, graduated in December with liberal arts and was honored by the uh the the National Football Foundation on March third. Um, so we're very proud of him and he was also honored as um our Southern California Football Coach Association All Academic Team. So Caleb. And I wanted to introduce, I wanted to introduce uh Coach Lapointe is his running back coach and he was able to attend the banquet on March the third uh with him. So I wanted to use uh Coach Lapointe.
Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to thank the ABC Board for having me speak about our star running back Caleb, Caleb Gardner. Caleb's a running back every every program wants and needs. Five nine frame for speed and a hundred and ninety five pound frame built for power. He he has the best of both worlds for a back. I joined the coaching staff last year and met the energy and personality of Caleb. You could see it. He was a leader from the start. He commanded excellent from our group as well as other football groups. He carried the ABC football and carried the ABC team. We all enjoy his talent in running the rock. In the twelve years of coaching community college football, Caleb was the best all around back I've ever seen and had the pleasure of coach. He has the academics, the leadership, and with him being a top athlete, he checks all the boxes. I'm honored and happy to say I am Caleb's ABC running back coach for life, now friends for life. Thank you, Caleb.
Caleb, Caleb, would you and your coaches please join us on stage? And Board President Harvey and I would like to give you your ring and a couple of certificates. So I want to, as you come up, I just want to congratulate you for all of the efforts that you've made. Yet, Coach, if you want to walk around the wing there, you can follow. I just want to congratulate you, Caleb. Being an athlete is hard work, being a scholar is hard work, and you've managed to do them both with excellence. So thank you for how you represented yourself and how you represented Antelope Valley College. We're very proud of you.
I was saying, we are so proud of you. We are proud of your athletic and your academic accomplishment and what a beautiful ring. I hope you enjoy it.
Congratulations, Caleb. Okay, our next student athlete is a wonderful young woman who won in January, was awarded the prestigious CalHope uh Courage in Athletics Award, Kami Nelson. Kami was an all conference player for us. Kami is a biological science major with a three point six six, was on the dean's list. And she recently spoke at our student athlete retreat. She was, we had a keynote speaker, Kami started off with her story to our student athletes. And she received a standing ovation with regards to what she presented. Um, I'd like to show a clip right now of what CalHope sent to Kami and all through California. And while they're loading that, Kami's award is, there's UC, all and all two California students are given this award. UC CSU's and California Community College. Kami was the first community college student to receive this award along with University of Pacific Student Athlete. So this young lady has accomplished so much and will continue after you see this quick little blurb from Ronnie La.
Hi, I'm Ronnie La, co-chair of the Governor's Council on Physical Fitness and Mental Wellbeing. I am honored to be a part of the CalHope Courage Award and share another remarkable story on an inspirational California college student athlete who has overcome adversity and behavioral health challenges to excel on the field and in the classroom and in life.
Cameron Nelson's remarkable journey is a testament to her resilience and triumph over profound challenges. Diagnosed with stage two chronic kidney disease at age six, her health anxieties added to her existing mental health issues. Anemia in sixth and seventh grade led to heightened anxiety, depression, and self harm, culminating in an ICU admissions for blood transfusions in the eighth grade. Her health issues forced her to switch from soccer to volleyball and despite being hospitalized with an eating disorder during the COVID nineteen pandemic, Kami's love for volleyball fueled her recovery. A knee injury put her on the sideline, but while recovering, she redirected her energy to advocacy, founding the Recovered Project to support those in eating disorder recovery. This led to her participation in the Dove Self Esteem Project, a viral commercial about eating disorders and the opportunity to speak on the topic at a congressional briefing in Washington DC. Cleared to return to volleyball in April twenty twenty three, Kami reached out to the coach at Antelope Valley College, tried out, and achieved her lifelong goal of playing a college sport. This season, the freshman appeared in fourteen games and ranked second on the team in sets and hitting percentage. Congratulations, Kami Nelson, CalHope Courage Award winner.
It would have been a much better video had forty Niners won the Super Bowl with Ronnie La, but uh what um, how this all came to fruition was Kami was selected by her volleyball coach as one of two members of the Student Athlete Advisory Council. She spoke out and talked to us about, she told us that she was a CEO of a nonprofit organization. That stirred my interest, so I met with Kami after and Kami told me her story, which drove me to nominate her for this prestigious award. And I can't say enough about this young lady. Um, what's also very nice is that she's going to receive a one thousand dollar uh gift to her nonprofit organization Recovered ED. So without further ado, I want to introduce Cameron Nelson.
Hi, thank you. Um, I was just supposed to say a little bit about myself. So yeah, I mean, you pretty much saw all in the volleyball, but I mean, all in the video, but I play volleyball here at ABC, which has just been like a phenomenal experience. I had such a good lot of fun this season and um actually didn't play very much sports in high school due to um the stuff in the video and the hospitalizations and stuff. But getting to come back and finally play being very healthy, it was just such a remarkable experience. And I wanted to thank ABC for allowing me to have that experience.
Remember the name Kami Nelson because she will be on our radar in the future. Thank you also very much.
So Kami and Dean Partee, please come around. It's only when we really get to know our students that we learn uh how many fascinating things happen in their lives and and what they're capable of doing. And I'm so impressed, Kami. Thank you so much for sharing your story with us. That's very brave and know that we're very, very proud of you.
Kami, first you have my niece's name, so, but I wanted to tell you, um, this award, of course, is for you. But it gives a lot of people hope, your story. I want you to know that from young people to old people like yourself. So thank you for what you've done and being able to share your experience because it's going to help so many people. I'm so proud of you. So is the board. You're welcome. Can we give both students a big round of applause? We are very proud of our ABC kids.
We are moving on to thirteen, the consent agenda of board members. Oh, sorry. Oh, yes. Please excuse that. Twelve point one is California Law Pathways twenty twenty four Education Pipeline Award Presentation. We are very proud of this program. Please excuse me for skipping over you and we're looking forward to hearing.
Hello, President Zellet and the board. So my name's Fritz Hemker. Uh, I'm the current uh Chair of the Law Scholars Committee here at ABC. Uh, we have a presentation, uh, a PowerPoint, hopefully that they, so there it is. Uh, and so I'm here with my colleagues, Carlos Pino, Alberto, uh, Doza, Laranaga, and then the um current president of the Pre-Law Club, Walton Beardsley. And so we just thought we'd take a moment to kind of explain what it is that we do. Uh, and then Alberto will uh tell you sort of the award that we won. So um, is there a clicker or something or do I wave at somebody? Oh, there it is. Okay, so uh ABC's uh Law Scholars uh Program is part of the California Law Pathways Initiative. Uh, the idea is that we recognize that a uh we live in a state with a diverse population and that in order to inculcate or encourage respect for our legal system and our court system, uh, we need a workforce that uh reflects that diversity. And so the Law Scholars uh Program uh uh attempts to achieve these goals uh by first providing exposure to uh the legal profession, to people who might not have had that before. Uh, we also provide uh leadership uh uh experience and education uh by encouraging students to take uh classes with uh in critical thinking skills. Uh, we provide access to the underrepresented, uh, which is the general mission of the California Community College System. Um, and so uh we do that through a number of uh different uh programs and modalities.
Hemper, you're too tall for me. All right, so preferred, preferred admissions over here. Uh, before starting, so a good evening to members of Board of Trustees. Dr. Salem is Patty McClure, Ms. Bridget Cook is team colleagues and guests. Alberto Mendoza Gonzalo Laranaga is mine, happy the interim Director of Equity. So here we discuss the preferred admissions, so it's not guaranteed. These include individual advisement, mentor from law school advisors, waived application fees for admissions and or preferred admission status upon acceptance. So upon these universities, their respective school of law, they believe much in the program, the um CalLaw Pathway Program, Antelope Valley College being one of the first ones, community college to sign up. Um, along this, I have good news that I wait for until the end from UC Davis School of Law. But even more news is that they see the success of this program, these universities and their respective school of laws that happen in form that Chapman University Fowler School of Law, McGeorge School of Law, Pepperdine University Caruso School of Law, Southwestern School of Law, University of San Diego School of Law, and Western State College of Law has also joined this program over here. So what this means is folks like Mr. Bolton Beardsley and others who are part of this program, sign up, they get there and they'll be a boxer. Were you a law scholar? Yes, they'll take that into consideration with respect to some of these things that we'll discuss here, such as the four requirements when looking at the program. But when we look at these, when it comes to the academic side, they're required to take English one oh one, uh, critical thinking part. I always nudge them to do the philosophy, you know, the critical thinking. There but nothing wrong, right? As I see my boss standing over here, English one oh two or one or three is fine too, right? Great critical thinking there as well. Yes. Introduction, Argumentation, Debate, COME one fifteen, Statistics Math one fifteen, US History one oh seven and one or eight, African American history is also included in this as well. Poli sci one oh one and for folks looking into maybe different tracks, they can take Judicial Process, which is Poli sci two or three. Or if they want to take more into corporate law, they can take the Business Law Course, Business two oh one, if they want to go throughout that avenue over there. Let me pass it on here to Mr. Carlos Pino to discuss some of these other requirements.
Uh, thank you, Alberto. Uh, and I'm just here to share a little bit about the active participation that is required for part of the Pre-Law Club and the Law Scholars Program. Uh, again, I'm a retired Beverly Hills Police Officer, former LA County Deputy Sheriff. Uh, some of our other club advisors are Amy Andrade, she teaches sociology, and Hank Price, uh, again, a full time faculty, former Secret Service agent. and Hank Price, again, full-time faculty, former Secret Service Agent. And we are boots on the ground where we meet weekly with club participants for an hour on Wednesdays. And again, Colton Beardsley, our president now, is going to talk about some of the guest speakers that we've had. But there is a service learning component that they have to be active in participating in the club and in community engagement opportunities. So not only are they getting the education required, but the practical experience in conducting our weekly meetings and also engaging in community activities. So Colton?
So I'll just explain like what, a bit of what we as club officers do for the club. So we're all students, we all volunteered and ran an election for this position. And one of the great things that the club offers is guest speakers. So as an officer, all of our officers reach out to people who we feel may offer some kind of educational experience through presenting to the club. So this can be done through local judges, lawyers, councilmen, people who own law firms in the area, or even just politicians who we think might offer something or have had previous law experience. And kind of what this does is it offers our students in a way to hear from people in the professions that they themselves might want to go down. And usually at the end of these meetings, they have the opportunity to ask questions, these individuals. We've also even had like former students, former officers for the club, be guest speakers every now and then. So it gains a real insight like, hey, I was in that, in your shoes, right? I was a member of this club and now I've gone on to this law school and I'm doing this now. And so it really helps students under, or see the experience that can be gained from attending these meetings. And it's really a great avenue for students also to meet other people who are interested in law. I've personally had friends of mine who have gone on and like met each other in the club and they found out that they both got accepted to one school and they ended up going there together. So they met in the club and now they're going to school or law school now and are still friends to this day. So it really offers a great educational component and a strong community component as well.
All right, so I'm going to bring it in for landing. At the conclusion of the semester, we actually have a graduation that takes place here in the Superior Court Building. And Dr. Zellet has been there and Bridgette Cook has been there in the past. And that's going to be occurring in April, just before our graduation here from ABC. The participants receive a purple lanyard and a certificate, and this is presented by the Superior Court Judges, which take time out of their busy schedule to talk about their life, how they, you know, got involved in the legal profession and now looking for the future, our students, to take that to the next level. So we do appreciate your attention and just, we wanted to share. And Alberto is going to kind of share on how we've been recognized again through the state.
So it's with immense pride that I stand here tonight to celebrate a significant milestone for Antelope Valley College in the realm of legal education. An apologies for that picture, I'm not sure, we could have edited, but. Need to start learning AI. So on February 23rd, our institution was bestowed with the prestigious Education Pipeline Award from Cal Law Pathways. This recognition is awarded to programs that have shown exceptional dedication to training and supporting students towards interest in the judicial system and legal careers. It highlights our commitment to nurturing the next generation of legal professionals and advocates. This honor reflects the collective effort of our vibrant community. I'd like to accept my heartfelt gratitude to the Law Scholars Committee, spearheaded by Mr. Fritz Hemker, Mr. Carlos Pino, Mr. John Vento, Dr. Jill Zimmerman, or Dean of Student Life, Dean Nate Dillon, a social behavioral scientist, for their unwavering dedication throughout the application process. Their leadership and vision were instrumental in showcasing the strength and impact of our program. Special thanks also to Michonne Shadow Corp., the Administration of Justice and SBS, whose expertise and guidance were vital in navigating the applications intricacies enabling us to present our program in the best light possible. Our achievement would also not have been possible without Dr. Zellet. From the onset, she believed in the Transforming Power of Law Scholars Initiative. Her foresight to pursue this application and meticulous edits on the final submission significantly contributed to our success. Dr. Zellet's belief in our work has been a driving force and for that, we're profoundly thankful. Moreover, we have received exhilarating news from Tuitik Wen, Advisory Board Chair of California Law Pathways at UC Davis School of Law, when we were presented on behalf of the institution, this award. So in an unprecedented move, Dean Kevin Johnson of UC Davis School of Law has agreed to admit students from the California Law Pathways Program participants. While participation in the program does not guarantee admittance, this agreement opens new doors for our students, offering them a more equitable chance to pursue their legal aspirations and contribute to diversifying and enriching the field of law. This collaboration with UC Davis School of Law symbolizes a significant leap forward in our mission to democratize access to legal education and careers. It stands as a testament to the quality and potential of the students nurtured within our program, affirming that our efforts are not only recognized, but also valued by esteemed institutions. So as we revel in these accomplishments, let us recognize them as stepping stones to more significant goals. These recognitions and partnership embolden us to dream bigger, push further, and continue our pursuit of excellence in legal education. We're making a profound difference in the lives of our students and shaping the future of the legal profession to be more inclusive, equitable, and just. Thank you once again to everyone who's played a part in this journey. Your dedication, belief, and hard work have brought us to this moment of celebration. Here's to many more achievements and milestones ahead for Antelope Valley College and our Law Scholars Program. Thank you.
Thank you. Would, would the four of you please come up and accept the award? We, we would like for this to be displayed in the business behavioral social sciences area, since that's where a lot of the courses are. And I think because so many of, of the faculty there support this effort, it would be great for it to be visible there for students and the faculty. And, and I, go ahead and come on up. So I, again, I thank all of them and I thank Dean Nate Dillon for his assistance in making this application. I encourage you to go to the website and have a look and you'll see the other institutions who've been awarded this honor and, and we're in a pretty elite group. And so I'm very, very proud of Antelope Valley College and all that we're doing for students.
Next, we have 12.2, a presentation we've been looking forward to seeing. Native American Graves Protection and Repatriation Act, NAPRA. Nagpra, sorry about that, N-A-G-P-R-A, presented by Dr. Darcy.
Thank you and good evening. I appreciate the time that you've offered me tonight to provide you the information about what we're doing in the anthropology department, particularly talking about the Native American Graves Reparation Act that we're working on currently. So I always think that we have many, many orphan collections on our campus. And I inherited this from my predecessor, Roger Robinson. He was here in the campus starting in 1968. He was the very first professor of anthropology. And for the next 39 years, he dug up the Western Mojave Desert. So we have over 300 archaeological sites recorded in-house in the department that, that students have participated in. We also have collections from the Antelope Valley Archaeological Society and we have collections that people just dropped on Roger's doorstep and he went ahead and took them in. So I have a wide variety of things in the Antelope Valley College Archaeological Repository, or the AVCAR as we typically refer to it. The collections range from lithic scatters, quarries, pictographs, temporary campsites, and even village sites here in the Western Mojave. Temporally, they scan about 5,000 years of history from the Pinto Period all the way through the Mission Period. So when I first came to Antelope Valley College, I was thrilled. I was like, oh my gosh, look at the research potential. And then moments later, I was exasperated when I realized the disarray of the collection. I realized that had been damages to the collection. I realized that he had not done very much analyses and underreporting of this. And this is a tenant, right? If you dig it, you have to report it. And he had not done that. So I was a little bit miffed, I guess it's a good way to say that, miffed about it. Because I realized these are all we call orphan collections. So orphan collections, as we speak on the archaeological community, are collections that were done without research design, without appropriate curation facilities that are underanalyzed, underreported, and there's more aspects, but it's the key points. But I recognize the research potential of these collections. So I figured, how do I get students involved? And so I developed and implemented a management research plan. And the key here was to train students in professional development on how to be archaeologists, but also how to curate collections and take care of them, how to incorporate those collections into my current course offerings. So I primarily brought him into students. There were my archaeology class got to start doing work with the inventory and rehousing archaeological artifacts. Students that showed interest, then I encouraged them to either do anthropology work experience with me or to do an honors option with me through the Honors Transfer Alliance Program. And also students Anthropology Club also helped out. So there's a kind of different ways to engage students. And it worked out really well. We did get a number of students. To date, I have had 28 students that have worked on the projects here in the collection. Many of them have done, again, student-based inquiry, research projects on the artifact collections. Some have put together a training collection to take out to K through six schools. They've done oral history projects. We are now have a digitized database started. We have done scanning of photos, files, field documentation, because all of that is still on paper and penciled from 1968 forward. So we were slowly getting everything digitized and it is happening. I also wanted to work with them doing local internships and volunteer opportunities at various different museums such as Moa, the Antelope Valley, and the Museum, and the Prime Desert. So in that regard, in 2014 is the very first time that we presented a, one of the student-based, well, several students-based inquiry research projects in Vassalia at the Society for California Archaeology Meetings. So that was the first time we could take one part of a collection and take it off the orphan status into reported on and analyzed. And I was very excited by that. It was only one portion of the collection, but that was okay, it was a start. That followed through in 2016 in Ontario where students also presented. We had two different papers presented on collections there, which also the students presented a paper too. And they were able to represent themselves at the Society for California Archaeology Meetings, as you can see in the second picture there. They were a very active student Anthropology Club. Then 2017, I had several students present again. And in 2019, we actually held a symposium. So this, all the students, we had eight people plus two discussants that came in. And those students then presented papers on each individual, one of their inquiry-based research projects on the artifact collection. In that one, we could actually say I had one collection that completely took off the orphan collection the status that was analyzed and reported on. And papers also were published too in the Peer Review Journal from the Society of California Archaeology Meetings. So I was really excited. I have students here at the community college doing original research, actually publishing papers, and then transferring into four-year universities. And they've told me how wonderful this is for them. They belong at the four-year. They realize these students at the four-years such as, and I will say it, UCLA, USC, Berkeley, Santa Cruz, I mean, all the UCs. They've transferred in and realized that those students, why, they're juniors there, have never touched an artifact, they have never done archaeological survey, they don't know anything about that. So they see that they have a kind of a one-up on these students and they feel really good about themselves. So that's fantastic. This past weekend, I was also very happy, we had a symposium again this past week at the Society of California Archaeology Meetings. That symposium was called Clearing Out the Cobwebs, Utilizing California Community College Orphan Collections for Innovative Undergraduate Research. So I had two alumni present there. One of them, I'm sitting on her Master's Committee at CSUN and she's using orphan collections to do rhyolite analyses. And another one is a current student here at ABC currently. And he's transferring to CSUN actually in the fall. Unfortunately, in the fall of 2019, I had to take a big switch from student inquiry-based research to investigating or, and starting the inventory for the Nagpra inventory. So Nagpra is the Native American Graves Reparation Act of 1990. And I found out my predecessor had never done it. I found out my predecessor had taken things home to his home when he retired. That was illegal also. And so I had to deal with this. And so we took a big switch there. The research inquiry portion took a big hold and we had to then focus on doing an inventory. And so what it is, is that all institutions that receive any kind of federal funding must inventory all their collections to identify any kind of human ancestors and any associated items that were, came from burials. And at that time, you have to then to be in compliance, notify federally recognized tribes, and go into consultation and repatriation with them. He had never done this. Yeah, okay. I want to strangle the man, I'll say that. Okay. And but what I did then was start working on, we retrained students on best practices for processing repatriation of the orphan collections. So students get to work with orphan collections, understand the benefits of working with stakeholding communities and tribal communities. And it promotes respect, relevance, reciprocity, and responsibility for changing the epistemologies we have regarding cultural patrimony. Also in 2021, the state of California passed CAL-NAGPRA. So what CAL-NAGPRA now says is that it fills in the gaps of the federal legislation, didn't. But as of December of this past year in '23, the federal regulation has now also been updated. So there's new stuff that actually went into effect this past January. So it's a never-ending emerging area that has to always be looked at and then changes made to be in compliance. And so currently, we are in compliance in the sense that we are working on our inventory for both the federal and the state and working with tribal communities. So the major focus then were these three main objectives for students. They're actually trained in being, assessing the collections we have, doing the archival research, trying to figure out where things are. If we have anything in our inventory that is, needs to be repatriated and identifying what those things are. And then last, to promote collaboration, right, with partnerships with tribal communities. So we're currently in consultation with a number of locally recognized tribes, both federal, which is what the federal Nagpra says, but also in CAL-NAGPRA says that we also have to do consultation and bring to the tables of tribal communities that are not federally recognized, but the state of California recognizes them. Which show, this is one of the things that we've been working on. We have three regulated, recognized tribes in the Western Mojave and then there are four other that are not. So I'm currently working with seven different tribal groups. We anticipate finishing the inventory completion, what we call the NOIC, the Notice of Inventory Completion, by the end of summer of 2025, and then be able to transfer those items to the appropriate tribes. I'm going to continue to collaborate with local communities. We're in the process of developing, hopefully for the district. I've been in consultation with President Zellet on this, of putting together a Native American Advisory Council, which will help us with work with the collections that are still here, that do not fall under the prevision of Nagpra, and seeing if we can't continue to develop student research projects with the tribes at the table, helping us make those decisions and having those open type of dialogues. So today, our purpose here is re-envisioning how the orphan collections at, particularly in a college, can dismantle gatekeeping ideologies, embrace community engaged research. The goal is to use these collections as a means of providing an environment that promotes collaboration and partnership with stakeholding and tribal communities in which their voice is heard. Questions?
One, one question. One question. Is AB College on former Native American tribal land, do you know?
Specifically located?
Yes.
Yes.
You know what tribe?
Well, see, so this is what's interesting about the Western Mojave, is there are four or five different tribes and they had communal grounds. They didn't draw lines in the sand and say, this is our boundary, that is your boundary. There was a lot of overlapping intermarrying, working together in community, particularly during gathering seasons for things like agave hearts and pinion and acorns. So there isn't, I can't say any one, but there are four, five different tribal, excuse me, four different tribal groups that consider where Antelope Valley College is located as their ancestral territory. Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I want to commend Dr. Rewall and I want the board to know that due to her efforts and her diligence, Antelope Valley College is far ahead of our sister institutions across the state who find themselves in possession of orphan collections and they have no idea where to begin. But thanks to Dr. Rewall and her work with students, we're in a very good position as far as our. we're in a very good position as far as our NAGPRA reporting, but also our students have benefited greatly. So thank you, Darcy.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yes, now we're to 13, can see the agenda. 14 is action. Oh, yes. All right. 13 cannot.
Second.
Vote Patty.
Student trustee Rivera.
I approve.
Trustee Gaines.
I approve.
Trustee Reeves.
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo.
Yes.
Trustee Adams.
Aye.
Trustee Harvey.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Dr. Baquet.
Good evening. I have the honor of reading the names of our newly-tenured faculty. Charles Chaz Burke from Respiratory Care. And one thing I forgot to mention is if you're here, which I hope you are, but not everybody was able to stay or were able to be here, please make your way up to the stage if you're here. Again, that was Charles Chaz Burke in Respiratory Care. We have Lena Coleman in Biology. Dr. Lauren Conroy in Biology. Charles Gordon in Kinesiology, Health Education, and Head Soccer Coach. Chrysanthos Kyriakides in Physics. We have Gregory Langner in Communication Studies. Kevin North in Film and Television. And finally, Samuel Padilla in Aeronautical Sciences and Technologies. Congratulations to them all.
I too. I'm very pleased to recommend this fine group of faculty for tenure. I want to share that I had the privilege of meeting with them for their final evaluation meeting. And when I, you know, they would leave the office, I would just stop and say, wow, how lucky are we to have such fantastic faculty? Congratulations to each and every one of you. I'm so proud to be working along with you. And I want to add, even in the four years that they have been, you know, going through the tenure process, they managed also to contribute in a great way to the departments they belong in. Whether it is the biology professors who produced a lab manual after many years of attempting to do that, and it's kind of like writing a book. To the theater area with Kevin and bringing speakers on campus and having students be able to connect and listen to advice from industry people. The whole group brings a lot of experience. Langner has many degrees from many institutions, multiple, you know, bachelor's degrees and master's degrees and PhD in Communication Studies. And I don't want to say less about the rest of them. Just very, very lucky, the students are very lucky to have these faculty. And again, I'm pleased and honored to recommend them for tenure, so thank you.
Would the board please join the faculty out front, and we'll do a picture.
Sure.
We are moving on to action items. 14.1 is approval of Resolution 23-24/6 of the Board of Trustees Regarding Compensation for Absence. Member of the Board of Trustees, may I get a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? May we get the vote, Patty?
Student trustee Rivera.
I approve.
Trustee Gaines.
Approve.
Trustee Reeves.
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo. Trustee Adams.
Abstain.
Trustee Harvey.
Yes.
Motion passes.
14.2 is approval of Resolution Number 23-24/7 to abolish obsolete CMA positions. May I get a motion?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, Madam President. We're all aware that we may have a budget crisis this year because the state of California is out of whack, $73 billion. And at that time, we may have to make some decisions. And I don't think it's in the best interest of a college at this point to abolish any positions until we see where the shoe drops and what kind of funding, et cetera, that we're going to get. So I would hold off on any abolishing positions at this time until we know exactly where we're going to stand, because we may have to revisit this and eliminate positions in the future. So just to be on the safe side, so that we don't have to do this continually, again, I suggest that this be defeated, and we wait until the summer to see what the budget is. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Patty, can we take the vote?
Student trustee Rivera.
Approve.
Trustee Gaines.
Approve.
Trustee Reeves.
No.
Trustee Buffalo. Trustee Adams.
Aye.
Trustee Harvey.
Yes.
Motion passes.
So we are at 14.3, Consideration of California Community Colleges Trustees, CCCT Board Election of 2024. We are choosing seven from the list of 13. Number one, I believe we are all choosing. That is our very own Barbara Gaines. We're very proud of her.
Madam President.
Yes.
I'm recommending we all have the list here. That number one, of course, is Barbara Gaines at Antelope Valley College. I hope that we would vote for Nan Gomez in the Kern County District. Number five is Barbara Calhoun in the Compton Community College District. Number eight is Beth Davis, Glendale Community College. Number nine, Greg Pensah of Allen Hancock Community College District. Number 10, Renato Perez-Gentura, Community College District. And number 11, Deborah Akada of State Center Community College District. I am recommending that we vote for those trustees for reelection or election. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that, Mr. Reeves. I know that in prior times, we have always looked at people adjoining our area, so those in Kern County and other places that are very close to us. I know that we need a motion for this. So may we get a motion?
I make a motion.
Second.
Discussion?
Student trustee Rivera.
I'm just going to go out and say I don't know enough about this, so I'm going to abstain.
Trustee Gaines.
Should I vote, or should I abstain?
You can vote.
Okay. Aye.
Trustee Reeves.
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo. Trustee Adams.
Aye.
Trustee Harvey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
So 14.4, we have a public comment. Jason Bowen.
Thank you. Just a brief comment. We have the tables on page 22 that lists the demographic breakdown for the various positions at Antelope Valley College. It would be, I would like to see, and I mean, I'm aware that the chancellor prescribes the format in which these are reported, but it would be convenient to see the breakdown separately for the executives, meaning the superintendent and assistant superintendents, and then administrative and managerial. I'd like to see those broken up in terms of, you know, what's the breakdown for the deans, et cetera? What's the breakdown for the directors, et cetera? So that information, I feel, would be especially valuable in determining where we need to do some of the work in improving diversity on the campus. Thank you.
Thank you. Alrighty. 4.14.4, I'm sorry. Approval and adoption of the Antelope Valley Community College District Equal Employment Opportunity Plan, EEO, planned for 2023 through 2026. May I get a motion?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, Madam President. This is a 35-page document. And I've gone through it a little and looked at some of the graphs that were in there. And as far as we're doing, we're doing pretty well as far as diversity, different peoples, Hispanic, white, black. So we're broadening out our base according to the graphs in this report. However, in the male, female, gender area, in a few categories, it has stayed the same. Like in clerical, it's 84% women in 2021. And then in 2020, it was 87%. And then in the nonfaculty in 2021, it was 62% women. And 2022, it was 61%. So it's, the male-female ratio hasn't improved, but diversity among cultures has. This is a very complicated report, and it's going to be in effect for three years, and it's mandated by the state and the federal government. I wish that we could postpone this until April, because I would like to read this thoroughly before we vote on it. It's 35 pages, and it's very technical language. It's like reading a telephone book upside down. So I don't know how to make the motion, but I would like to postpone this approval of this until April. Thank you.
Dr. Zellet, could you tell us about the compliance relative to EEOC in this report?
I'll invite Dr. Helsberg to come to the microphone. She worked with a task force with a group here on campus to compile this report. And she has information about the deadlines for state reporting as well.
So the EEO plan is a Title V.
Please speak right into the microphone. The interpreters need to hear.
Sorry. The EEO plan is a Title V requirement for all the community colleges. And so it is due to the state chancellor's office, Dr. Christian. This is a new format. The EEO plan has been in existence for many years, but they retooled the format. And so we were, and they cohorted the schools in the different districts until when they would be due in accordance to this new format. So we were in the first go-around. Our draft was due in May to the chancellor. We got it back in late August with extensive feedback. We had a certain amount of time to then incorporate the feedback, and we incorporated the feedback and went back out to our EEOC, so our EEO Advisory Council Committee. And then it was sent back with the incorporated feedback to Dr. Christian's office. They, we got commendations on it that we've incorporated everything and that it's a very thorough and comprehensive plan. And so then we have 90 days to accept, adopt it here on our campus. And so the end of March would be within our 90 days. So I would advocate that we approve it this month if possible.
Dr. Alon Helsberg, let me ask a few questions.
Please.
About it. We are following all state of California compliance relative to EEOC rules.
That is correct.
We are following all federal compliance relative to EEOC rules.
That is correct.
We have collaborated with the appropriate offices for the state of California on this report, and you have received commendations for how well it has been crosswalked and aligned relative to the rules of both the federal government and the state of California. Am I correct?
Specifically with the state, but yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you so much. Any other questions? May I have a vote?
Student trustee Rivera.
I approve.
Trustee Gaines.
Approve.
Trustee Reeves.
No.
Trustee Buffalo. Trustee Adams.
Aye.
Trustee Harvey.
Yes.
Motion passes.
We are at 14.5, Approval of Academic Policies and Procedures, APNP, Committee's Recommendations, of course, listing for Fall 2024. May I have a motion?
Second.
Discussion? Patty, can we take the vote?
Student trustee Rivera.
Approve.
Trustee Gaines.
Approve.
Trustee Reeves.
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo. Please use your microphone. Trustee Adams.
Aye.
Trustee Harvey.
Yes.
Motion passes.
14.6, Approval of Amendment to our Professional Service Agreement Between McDougall, Bomer, Foley, Longen, Mitchell, and Erickson, a professional corporation in Antelope Valley Community College to increase funds for legal services and Title IX live hearing decision-making. We have a public comment. Pamela Ford.
Good evening, everyone. I know that you're going to go ahead and vote affirmative for this, but I just have some questions. For hearings that they hold now, there's confidentiality is a huge issue. So I'm wondering how that's going to be addressed with live hearings? And will employees have the option to opt out? As I was sitting here tonight, I was reading about live hearings, live hearing decision-making. And I learned that Title IX allows for the district, for districts to resolve such complaints in-house. And I've been reading some college and university contracts, and they are falling. And they are following that design. So I'm wondering why AVC doesn't? Because we spend a lot of money on investigations. I understand the necessity of them, but I still think that if there's other options that we can use, then we definitely should. And they can be, according to some of the contracts and the Title IX regs, they can be, if both parties desire to have investigations addressed by in-house, then that would minimize the cost, but it would have to be approved by both sides. So I'm just curious as to why we haven't included that option in Title IX. Thank you.
Thank you. May I get a motion?
Move or approve.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes, Madam President. I want to bring this up. I brought it up before. We have multiple legal issues. And I'm sure other community colleges, I'm positive, they have the same issues. And I brought this up, that if a conglomeration of community colleges could hire a law firm in certain areas.
Mr. Reeves, can you, Mr. Reeves, can you speak into your microphone, please?
Yes. If a conglomeration of community colleges could hire a law firm and share the expense and have this law firm on retainer to handle these issues for multiple colleges? Because this is going on and on. And I know we have to hire specialized law firms that deal with specialized issues. But if there's a multiple group of community colleges that are experiencing the same issues, would it be possible that we could have one law firm represent everybody on retainer to handle this, and you don't have to go through this one by one? This law firm could handle these cases? It's something I wish would be looked at and see if any of the other colleges are working together like that, or they just are singularly hiring law firms as needed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves. Patty, the vote.
Student trustee Rivera.
Approve.
Trustee Gaines.
Approve.
Trustee Reeves.
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo.
Yes.
Trustee Adams.
Aye.
Trustee Harvey.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Fourteen point seven is approval of amendment number three to consultant services between Shaw HR Consulting, Inc., and Antelope Valley to update the terms of the agreement through June thirtieth, 2026. May I get a motion?
Second.
Discussion.
Patty, can we call for the vote?
Student trustee Rivera.
Approve.
Trustee Gaines.
Approve.
Trustee Reeves.
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo.
Yes.
Trustee Adams.
Aye.
Trustee Harvey.
Yes. Four point eight, approval to enter into an agreement with Team Civex LLC for bond election consulting services. May I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, Madam President. It's my understanding that the Antelope Valley Union High School District may put up a bond measure this year. And if that's true, and if we want to put one up, it's going to present a problem. So I would hold off on getting these agreements about bond election consulting services and bond surveys to see if any of the other school districts in the area are going to have bond measures in the fall. Thank you.
Madam President, may I, may I speak?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. It is my belief, my perception, that most school districts, this is an election year. And most school districts, perhaps even in the Antelope Valley, I've already heard of counting Antelope Valley Community College. I've heard of four other school districts who will be going for a bond. It's common knowledge that an election year for a presidential election is a better year to go for a bond if we're going to do it, meaning 2024 would be better than 2026.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Patty, can we take the vote?
Student trustee Rivera.
Approve.
Trustee Gaines.
Approve.
Trustee Reeves.
No.
Trustee Buffalo.
Yes.
Trustee Adams.
Aye.
Trustee Harvey.
Yes. Fourteen point nine, approval to enter into an agreement with Franklin Maslin, Maulin, Metz &amp; Associates, Inc. for bond survey and research services. May I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
The vote?
Student trustee Rivera.
Approve.
Trustee Gaines.
Approve.
Trustee Reeves.
No.
Trustee Buffalo.
Yes.
Trustee Adams.
Aye.
Trustee Harvey.
Yes.
Fourteen ten, approval of lecturer agreement between AAE International, Inc. on behalf of Vernigas Fly Girl Armor and Antelope Valley College for the Women Veteran History Lunch on March twenty, twenty-four with equity funds. We hope to see you there. May we have a motion?
Move or approve.
Second. Discussion. The vote?
Student trustee Rivera.
I approve.
Trustee Gaines.
Approve.
Trustee Rivera. I'm sorry, trustee Reeves.
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo.
Yes.
Trustee Adams. Trustee Harvey.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Fourteen eleven, approval of furniture purchase with Sierra School Equipment for the reconfiguration of the Human Resources Department with district funds. May I get a motion?
So move.
Second.
Discussion. The vote?
Student trustee Rivera.
Approve.
Trustee Gaines.
Approve.
Trustee Reeves.
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo.
Yes.
Trustee Adams. Trustee Harvey.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Fourteen twelve, approval to renew help desk management software solution from Atlassian PTYLTD Limited. May I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Discussion. The vote?
Student trustee Rivera.
Approve.
Trustee Gaines.
Approve.
Trustee Reeves.
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo.
Aye.
Trustee Adams. Trustee Harvey.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Fourteen thirteen, approval of contract for non-destructive testing equipment, RFB number AVC twenty twenty-three slash twenty twenty-four dash three A to Evident Scientific, Inc., with strong workforce grant funds. May I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Discussion. The vote?
Student trustee Rivera.
Approve.
Trustee Gaines.
Approve.
Trustee Reeves.
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo.
Yes.
Trustee Adams.
Aye.
Trustee Harvey.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Fourteen fourteen is approval of project assignment amendment PAA to Beacon's Moving Solutions, Inc. for assigned office packing and relocation with district funds. May I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Discussion. The vote?
Student trustee Rivera.
Approve.
Trustee Gaines.
Approve.
Trustee Reeves.
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo.
Yes.
Trustee Adams.
Aye.
Trustee Harvey.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Fourteen point fifteen, approval of amendment number one to services agreement with United Site Services for General Conditions, number seventeen dash zero four two. May I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Discussion. The vote?
Student trustee Rivera.
Approve.
Trustee Gaines.
Approve.
Trustee Reeves.
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo.
Yes.
Trustee Adams.
Aye.
Trustee Harvey.
Yes.
Motion passes.
I'm going to ask the trustees if we can put fourteen sixteen, fourteen seventeen. They are both with scheduled maintenance funds. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. The vote, Patty?
Student trustee Rivera.
Approve.
Trustee Gaines.
Approve.
Trustee Reeves.
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo.
Aye.
Trustee Adams. Trustee Harvey.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Fourteen point eighteen, approval to purchase software services from Scantron with Prop 20 funds. May I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Discussion. The vote?
Student trustee Rivera.
Approve.
Trustee Gaines.
Approve.
Trustee Reeves.
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo.
Yes.
Trustee Adams. Trustee Harvey.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Trustees, I'll ask fourteen nineteen, fourteen twenty, fourteen twenty-one. These are all using block grant funds. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, Madam President. How, how much of the COVID money do we have left over?
All of the money has been encumbered or allocated, sir.
Any other questions, Mr. Reeves?
No, that's.
The vote?
Student trustee Rivera.
Approve.
Trustee Gaines.
Approve.
Trustee Reeves.
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo.
Yes.
Trustee Adams.
Aye.
Trustee Harvey.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Trustees, fourteen point twenty-two, fourteen point twenty-three, and fourteen point twenty-four are all using Measure AV funds. May I have a motion that we group these together?
So move.
Second. Discussion.
Yes. Does anybody know how much all of this is, the three of them? Total, total amount? Was it three projects?
These all have been allocated in plans. Do we have someone who could come up and tell us? Mr. Brier?
Are you asking the total amount of the change orders? Is that the question you're asking, sir?
How much money are we dealing with here?
So they're all three separate board agenda items, right? And so the first one, the total is listed dollar amount, for example, fourteen point two-two, one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, forty percent is coming from Measure AV. The second one is one hundred and forty-nine thousand, Measure AV. And fourteen point two-four is twenty-nine thousand. That's a change order for a gas line that needed to be moved.
Okay, it's nice to know how much money we're appropriating. Thank you very much.
It's also posted. I just want people to realize that they can review it. Can we take the vote?
Student trustee Rivera.
Approve.
Trustee Gaines.
Approve.
Trustee Reeves.
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo.
Yes.
Trustee Adams.
Aye.
Trustee Harvey.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Fifteen is our informational items, 2024 administrative reorganization.
Just very briefly, I want to thank the whole institution for coming together and working through this process to provide a really constructive and helpful, I believe, reorganization that actually produces a net negative, a net negative increase or a decrease, if you want to say it that way, in administrative positions, saving the institution north of three-quarters of a million dollars on an annual basis in preparation for some of the times referenced earlier by trustee Reeves. And so I thank, thank the college for ongoing conversation. And I, I'm deeply appreciative for walking this process together.
Thank you for that. We're now to reports and announcements. Sixteen one, Academic Senate, Hal Huntsman.
Good evening, trustees. President Zalat, Ms. Cook, Ms. McClure, President Harvey. We did speak a little bit beforehand. I have a resolution to read, and it's going to take me a little bit of time. So I hope you'll allow me just a little extra time. Thank you very much. So the resolution is, was adopted by the Academic Senate on February fifteenth, 2024, and it's on adopting an educational planning and registration system. And it is, I apologize, it's a little bit lengthy. Whereas the Antelope Valley College Academic Senate is committed to the continued growth in student enrollment, retention, and success. And it is important to examine any potential barriers that students may face when registering for classes and problems that may impact timely graduation. And whereas EdGnav provides course recommendations and is the primary registration tool for all students at Antelope Valley College, regardless of whether or not they meet with the counselor. And whereas all students have access to EdGnav and many use it to enroll in classes each semester, often without meeting with the counselor, and therefore, they rely on EdGnav to provide accurate information to help them meet their educational goals. And whereas EdGnav is prone to errors and inaccuracies and fails to address significant issues that impact students' completion of their degrees and certificates. And whereas EdGnav's course recommendations are presented in a way that makes students think that they have no choice but to take what they are given, regardless of the amount of choices that are available at the student's disposal. And whereas when building a term-by-term plan, EdGnav does not take into account the fact that certain courses should not be taken together, which affects students' retention and success rates. And whereas EdGnav does not account for outside course credit, such as transfer courses or AP or IB and CLEP, which can result in students illegally repeating a course that they have already completed or for which they have received credit. And whereas EdGnav does not allow for the planning of major preparation coursework needed to transfer to specific majors and/or universities. And whereas the EdGnav algorithm for quote-unquote "random" course recommendations is unclear, including the individual subject, time, day, instructor, et cetera, and is affecting enrollments in specific sections of courses without human input. And whereas even if we were able to solve all these problems, the curriculum changes all the time based on student needs, program developments, and state requirements, which means EdGnav has to be continually updated and checked for accuracy. Therefore, we resolve that the AVC Academic Senate urges the AVC administrators and the Board of Trustees to adopt educational planning and registration software that provides accurate, up-to-date information and equitable course recommendations regarding the class schedule. And further resolve that the AVC Academic Senate urges the AVC administration and the Board of Trustees to rely primarily upon faculty in the decision-making process to adopt educational planning and registration software. And finally, we resolve that the AVC Academic Senate urges the AVC administration to dedicate enough resources to the educational planning and registration tool to ensure that it continues to function accurately and equitably for students. Now, what I really want to make sure that you understand here is that the faculty are not against EdGnav. What we want is for the students to have a tool that works well. And we want students to get good information that's accurate. We understand that there is a compliance issue here, that we have to have a tool that, for, for financial aid reasons. But also because every student doesn't always get to see a counselor. And so we need good tools. And so I think for me, it's very important that we, it's going to take significant resources to make this work properly. People, processes, and probably some money. And so I just want to make sure that you're hearing that we want it to work well for students, and it's not working yet. We know that it's being worked on. I know that the administration is working hard on the issue. And we still have work to do. And it, and it's not going to be one time. It's going to continue to need that continual update. It's sort of like, you know, your Google Maps. They work, they're okay for, until the road changes. It's the same thing. If the, if the tool doesn't, isn't based on good information, then it's not going to work well. And so there's going to need that continual updating. And, and really, I mean, the, the element of humanness here is there's so many little complicated things. You know, I'm not a counselor, but I've learned more and more in the last couple of years about counseling and what counselors do than I ever thought I would. And there, there's so many little things that are, have, they have to know that have to go into the system. And that's what we're concerned about. I'm going to leave it with that, but I do appreciate all your efforts and your work. And thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Antelope Valley College Federation of Teachers, Dr. Jason Bowen.
Good evening. What the faculty union would like is for the administration to comply with the collective bargaining agreement to be reasonable and to be fair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, Antelope Valley College Federation of Classified Employees, Ms. Pamela Ford.
Good evening. Again, I wanted to let you know that we have elected two new officers, two new executive board officers. Second Vice President Juan Esen in Public Relations, Charmaine, Public Relations Officer Charlene Wiley. And we, they're going to be receiving intensive training because since they are executive board officers, they are grievance officers by default. And once their training's completed, then we will notify when they will actually be able to handle cases, but for now they'll be shadowing us. And it's wonderful to have a full team. We just have one more office to fill and then another set of elections. What I'm about to share with you now, I believe, is important whether or not you're the subject of an investigation because all are entitled to due process. Now, when I had the training with Dr. Helsper for our program, I gleaned a lot of information and a lot of understanding about Title IX. However, I believe there needs to be some kind of follow-up training because, so that people understand what justifies an investigation. And there needs to be some sort of triage to determine if there's been a gripe, a grievance, a complaint, or if it truly is a justifiable investigation. I say this because it appears that there's all kinds of investigations going on every time I turn around. And so I was talking to our legal counsel about this, and he expressed to me last week that this is a statewide issue. It seems that districts all over the state are, are jumping first to Title IX investigations. And so there's, there, there needs to be some kind of balance. And so I'm wondering, is, so we, we were sort of talking about different things, and I was wondering, is there even some type of due process? I mean, every level of sort of discipline or whatever has some step of due process so that you don't just jump immediately to have to have an investigation. And also, it just seems that it's happening a little too often and for, for, I don't know, so many different reasons, but I think that we really need to think about what we're doing as a district. And for a change beyond the cutting edge of being proactive and finding positive ways to resolve issues. I was very surprised when I was reading about Title IX to find out that some of these things can be handled within the district instead of constantly going to outside counsel. And as the chancellor's office references, I think as a district, we need to interrogate our processes so that we can work together and work smarter when it comes to these investigations because I think that's for the benefit of the district and the employees. Thank you.
Thank you. Confidential Management Supervisory Administrator Employees, Ms. Ashley Hawkins.
Hello. Good evening. Excuse me. We wanted to welcome everybody back from spring break. It was nice today being back on campus with all of our students. They were refreshed and, and ready to take on the second half of spring. And I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge a couple members of our group. Our academic affairs specialist, Kyle Jacobson and Sam Darby, got the schedules live today for summer and fall, which is a huge feat. And they are already hard at work on bringing intercession and spring for next year, so we just wanted to acknowledge their hard work. Thanks. Have a good night.
Steve Benitez is not here this evening, so we're going to move on to Antelope Valley College Foundation, Diane Knipple.
Good evening, Ford, President, support. This is the best time of the year. Why? We are now starting to award scholarships, over $200,000 worth of scholarships to about 143 students, 250 or so scholarship awards. Yay. I want to specifically thank my staff member, Emily Moulton, who's in the audience today. Emily, thank you. She is the engine behind the award and the process. We probably have a little over 88 to 90 participants reviewing scholarships, and those are internal and external community members. So it's no small feat for what she's accomplishing. So thank you, Emily. Good job. Coming up, and I know some of the board members are actively selling tickets. I won't put any names to boot, but, thank you, Michael, and others. So anyway, Wine Walk is coming up on the 19th of, I'm sorry, the 29th of April, 27th, right? 27th, yeah, yeah. My dates are all screwed up. The 27th from 5:30 to 8:00. We have more wineries and support than we've had in the past couple of years. We also have non-alcoholic for those that want to just have a nice time as well. Good food, silent auction, good music, and we are selling tickets very well. This is going to be a bang-up year. It's going to be back in the Student Services Building, so please, come one, come all. You're supporting the community scholarship for students. And it's our endowment that, that funds the faculty grant program. So we're pleased to be able to put all the money from our proceeds into that endowment. Thank you. Appreciate your support. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Office of the Superintendent, President, Dr. Zellet.
Good evening, trustees and student trustee. This evening marks an accomplishment for our institution. We navigated challenging waters to come to a new administrative structure that not only achieves significant efficiencies, over 3/4 of a million dollars annually, but also offers possibilities for the college to grow into the future. The reorganization is timely in that continued reports from the state signify that we must tighten our proverbial belts to plan for significant shortfalls in the statewide budget. January's tax revenues have the LAO forecasting a statewide $73 billion shortfall, and that's up $15 billion from the previous prediction. Not all of that is on the back of education, but a significant portion winds up when they balance things out. There are many ideas floating around to make up the shortfall, but we will not know anything concrete until the May revision. All of this is to say now is the time to plan. Now is the time to think creatively, to arrive at solutions to challenges. As we continue campus-wide discussions during budget planning season, let's plan conservatively and let's all get our tax returns filed on time so that May revise will actually mean something. I would like to celebrate Women's History Month by noting that today, March 11th, in 1959, Lorraine Hansberry's play, A Raisin in the Sun, opened at the Barrymore Theater in New York. This play's title comes from the Langston Hughes poem Harlem, A Dream Deferred, and the plot of the play follows the younger family as they struggle with poverty, housing discrimination, and assimilation. Ultimately, the poem and the play cause the reader or the viewer in the audience to contemplate the consequences of continually deferring the dreams, hopes, and aspirations of others. The poem reads like this. What happens to a dream deferred? Does it dry up like a raisin in the sun? Or fester like a sore and then run? Does it stink like rotten meat? Or crust and sugar over like a syrupy sweet? Maybe it just sags like a heavy load? Or does it explode? When we consider the power of education, we realize that dreams need not be deferred. In fact, through our new marketing campaign, we invite students in by saying, "Dreamers belong here." We don't delay progress at AVC, we welcome it. Our privilege at AVC is to prevent the deferral of anyone's dreams. Our privilege is to remove barriers that impede access to education. Our privilege is to surround students with the support that they need so that they can be about the hard work of learning. This is the heart of equity work. This is what we are here to do, and this is what I celebrate in Hansberry's work. As we move into the second half of the semester, I encourage us all to embrace with renewed conviction this upside-down model of AVC serves. When I serve others, I'm necessarily focused on their needs. When I serve others, I'm necessarily going to evaluate what, how, and when I'm doing things to ensure that it's what others need. When I serve others in a broader community of service, we collectively can't help but become more unified. Let's make sure that when we show up in educational spaces, that we are authentically oriented towards serving our students and our community. Let's make sure that we, from our places of privilege, approach our work with full recognition that at some point in time, someone served us in order to get us where we are now. Let's pay it forward in such a way that AVC serves becomes more than our strategic plan. It becomes the simple sentence that describes how this institution succeeds. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Zellet. Well said. Now we're to board member comments.
I would like to echo Dr. Zellet's Happy Women's History Month. I know this is a month to celebrate all of women's, women's contributions to society and history and to not let that go unnoticed. So I'd like to point out that our president of the college is Dr. Zellet, of course. So I'd like to make this short. I'd like to congratulate the athletes tonight, specifically, her name was...
Cami.
Cami, Cami. I really admire her courage and the way that she was able to just overcome her challenges. And I think that's really inspiring to all of us. And also, as well, Caleb, for his outstanding work academically and in sports. I'd like to congratulate the Pre-Law Club for their amazing work. The, the anthropology and archaeology groups on campus, it was really, I did not know that we had such an extensive undergraduate research program here, and it's really exciting to see. And the newly tenured staff here. Congratulations. Have a good night.
Next, we have Barbara Gaines. Do you have comments?
I think he said it off this evening. I have nothing else. Thank you.
All right. Trustee Reeves?
First of all, I want to wish everybody a happy St. Patrick's Day this weekend, so behave yourselves. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buffalo.
Mr. Reeves is buying everybody green beer. I have nothing, just hoping Sacramento gets its act together, which I know was not going to happen. So hopefully we'll hang in there and we'll get through this. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Adams.
I would, once again, like to congratulate the Board of Trustees here at Antelope Valley College. As far as I know, we are still the only board among the community colleges of California that gives out a scholarship that's solely funded by the Board of Trustees. And I'm happy to say that the board will be giving out four $500 scholarships this year to our students. I, I thank the commitment of the board for this effort.
Thank you so much for letting us know that. That's wonderful. Dr. Zellet, I just want to thank you for all of the hard work that you're doing here at Antelope Valley College. I was elected in 2020, and you notice as an educator when language changes. And language here has changed. We're hearing so much more about pedagogy and empirical research and data. It makes me feel so good. I know that we are moving forward. I just want to say quickly to my hearing impaired or challenged family, I apologize on behalf of the board. This is the second meeting where we've had to go to closed caption. Closed caption is not a stand-in for an interpreter. So we will do our best to make sure, you know, we have business to do and we're going to be here and do the work, but we also want to make sure that everyone can participate fully. So as board president, I will make sure that, as much as I can, that we are as efficient as possible so that everyone can participate in this process. It's important to note that on April 8th, at our next meeting, it is at the Palmdale Center. So I wanted to make that known, and of course, we will have everything posted. Have a good evening, and we will see you next month.